Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, August 30th. This meeting is being taped by Whitman Hansen Cable Access, and I would invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Mr. Weeks. Mrs. Rain is on vacation, a longstanding planned vacation. So, Mr. Weeks, would you mind reading the announcements?
My pleasure. Announcements, October special town meeting will be held on Monday, October 3rd, 2022, at the Hanson Middle School at 7:30 PM. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Bylaw Review Committee, the Recreation Commission, and Highway Study Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, or by calling the Selectmen's Office at 781-293-2131. And we have upcoming meetings, the Select Board, September 13th, 2022, and another Select Board meeting, September 27th, 2022.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business is to appoint Michael Malef Jr. as a police officer with the Hanson Police Department. Chief Mix, would you mind... Can we get up for us?
Yes, so we have a vacancy. An officer recently, back in June, transferred out of the department to East Bridgewater, where he grew up. So, we put on an ad. Normally, I get 50-plus resumes and letters, and, yeah, we got like 20. Of that, I think it was six met the minimum requirements we had posted. We did end up interviewing 10 individuals, however, given some of their history or their backgrounds. And out of the interview process, Mike Malef is the one who came out on top. Michael grew up in Whitman. He is a Whitman Hansen graduate. He's currently a police officer over Martha's Vineyard on Oak Bluffs. He's been a police officer over there since 2013. We started in West Tisbury. He is working on his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. One of the things that's impressive with Michael is he's part of the Drug Task Force over there, so he's done some detective work. And he's also a field training officer, which ironically enough, when it comes to us, he's gonna have to go through an FTO with us, with one of our field training officers. So, he's got some good training and experience. He's very excited to get here. Of course, if you know anybody over in the island, they're very excited to get off the island, unless they're a millionaire. So, he's fully academy-trained, which will save us a lot of money. I'm gonna take him in. We're gonna do the FTO with us here. And he looks like he'll be a very good fit for the department. With that, I appreciate a motion. The motion's specifically worded because he is...
Mr. Weeks has the motion.
I have to give him the conditional offer before I can do all those.
Did anybody have any questions for Chief Mix before we make the motion? Mr. Weeks, would you do us the...
My pleasure. I make a motion that Michael Scott Malef Jr. be appointed as a full-time police officer on the town of Hanson, contingent upon successfully passing a medical exam, a psychological exam, and a background check.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Thank you. And we're gonna take one other item out of order, and then we will get to the appointment of Mr. Cahill. We also have on here declared three police vehicles as surplus vehicles. Chief Mix?
So, each year, what I've been doing since I got here is we came up with a fleet program, where the marked cars last about five years. Sometimes, if they're in good shape, I keep them a little longer. If they're kind of lemons, I try and get them out the door earlier. Normally, I do two a year. However, about every third year, we have to do three, because we have to replace the unmarks that last between six and nine years. This is a year that we're replacing the unmarks. What we started doing was trading them in through the dealer, who is on the state bid list. And that offsets the cost of upfitting them. And it's actually worked out very well, because although their life expectancy with us is pretty much done to go out and be used on the road for civilian purposes, they still have a use. And I know this came up. Somebody asked me yesterday, when they saw it, about transferring the vehicles. I can't transfer the vehicles because of the green communities. We used to do that. And that actually was kind of a pain anyways. We'd transfer a vehicle to Town Hall, and then I'd be spending a bunch of money trying to keep it running instead of just moving the thing on. So, we're replacing them with hybrids, for the most part, which fall into the green communities, or I'm replacing them with newer models that have better gas mileage than the ones we're getting rid of. So, this year, I need to get rid of three. And one of them you can see is pretty old. It's at a 13, I believe. So, that lasted us quite a while, a lot longer than it should have, put it that way.
Okay, did anybody have any questions for Chief Mix? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you, Chief Mix.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you for taking me on a little tour.
Yep, no problem. And again, we're gonna, you know, take things a little bit out of order just in consideration of people's time. Discuss and vote to appoint Sean Cahill to the Parks and Fields Committee term. Mr. Cahill's application is in your packet. And, Mr. Cahill, great, you beat me right to the punch. If you don't mind just stepping up and telling us a little bit about you, and we want to thank you for applying. We appreciate that. And we also want to tell you that we appreciate you taking the online ethics training and including that in your packet. That is amazing. You've set now a bar that we're going to expect for every applicant going forward.
I try.
Thank you. So, if you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in filling this vacancy, that would be great.
Okay. My name's Sean Cahill. I've lived in Hanson since 1978. Grew up here most of my life, because I have a little stint in Whitman. I coach Hanson Youth Football, Hanson Youth Baseball, Hanson Youth Basketball. I currently serve on the board of the Hanson Youth Football. I've been asked to volunteer for the Parks and Fields to represent Hanson Youth Football. And I've been coaching football for about five years. I have a son who's nine. My daughter Jennifer's eight. And I have one 19-month-old boy named James, who's COVID baby, so...
So, you're gonna be coaching for a while.
We're here to stay. Yeah, I'll be coaching for a while, so I'll be here to stay. And I love the town.
Okay, that's awesome. Did anybody have any questions for Mr. Cahill?
I just have my one question. Is there any conflicts of interest that you're aware of that we should be disclosed to us?
Not that I know of.
Fine by me.
Great. With that, I will entertain a motion to appoint Sean Cahill to Parks and Fields.
Second. I just wanted to add that I've worked with Sean, being the liaison for Parks and Fields. So, I've had an opportunity to meet him through the meetings. And he's represented football very well. And Sean, if I'm not mistaken, you did a program for the boys, right?
Yeah. We do, we try to get an early spring program. We did an eight-week program this spring, trying to get kids involved with football, mostly calisthenics and just basic drills, no pad joint. Just getting the excitement going and teaching the youth, getting more involved with team sports.
I just thought that was important for Sean to add, because, you know, football is more than just hitting, so...
Yeah, we do that every spring, just to get interested and get the kids motivated and get some exercise.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty cool.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'd be thinking of a better person to be on the committee.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for stepping up. So, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for wanting to serve. Really appreciate it.
All right. And now, we'll move along. We have got Jake Marti. He is not here this evening, but he is the student intern from Bridgewater State, who's going to step in for a period of five to six weeks, right around there, to assist in the town administrator's office. And I'm looking for a motion to appoint Jake Marti.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Vote to appoint Lynn McDowell as the Executive Assistant to the Select Board and Town Administrator, with the start date of September 7th, 2022, contingent on reference and background checks. And I'm, we will still make the appointment contingent, but Chief Mix let me know tonight that Lynn is clean as a whistle and good to go. So, I will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And Lynn is here with us tonight, and we're thrilled. We can't wait for you to start. And your start date is the 7th, so right after Labor Day. And you may want to stick around for a few minutes to hear about the rest of what's been going on lately.
See what next week's gonna be like.
So, we met in an executive session last evening to discuss a matter regarding the physical competency of an employee, Ms. Green, who is going to be going on a temporary medical leave. Naturally, I cannot get into any details. That would be violating HIPAA, nor do I think people necessarily want to hear the gory details. With that, that obviously, we're in a critical time since we are knee-deep in preparations for town meeting, which is one of the most important days of the year for the town. So, we were able to work with our town council and a number of other folks to identify a candidate who has acted as an interim in the past for other boards, other select boards, has been a select board member in Abington himself, and has quite an impressive resume. He is going to work with us full-time for the first couple of weeks to onboard Ms. McDowell. And potentially beyond a couple of weeks, we'll kind of play that by year, but initially, that's kind of what the agreement is. And then, the thought process is he will pull back to 20 hours a week and be on-call full-time at no charge to the town for being on-call, unless he physically has to come into the office. And we're hopeful that between him and Jake and Lynn, we'll get things back on track at the office. So, we're in a bit of a pinch, but the good news is, he's able to start tomorrow. Mr., at the board, all discussed this last night in executive session. We all agreed that he was a good candidate, and that if Mr. Hickey and I felt comfortable, after we had individual conversations with him, that we would proceed with making the offer. Both of us spoke to him, and I don't want to speak for you, but we were both, we were impressed. He's got a great sense of humor, which is gonna stand him in good stead. He's basically done this job a million times over. He knows what's what. He knows his priority is to get the town meeting warrant done. And he knows what he's, you know, what he's coming into and what's expected of him. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, only I, when I spoke to him, Laura, I felt the same way. He's very knowledgeable about the job, and the most important thing right now for us is town meeting.
Yep.
And he's been through it many times, so...
Yep. So, the board felt with Lisa's medical situation, we wanted her to be able to focus on getting well. She's been really trying to be a hero by coming in, and I think she's actually ended up causing more problems by coming in. And so, we really said to her, you need to take care of yourself, and we want to give you the opportunity to do that. But we need to steady the ship and bring somebody in to make sure we're getting the day-to-day business done. So, we're entering into an agreement with Mr. Donovan for a period of up to three months. We'll play it by ear to see how Lisa's progress, you know, how her recovery progresses. And the agreement with Lisa is that she will be using sick and vacation time while she's out, because FMLA is a funky thing, and she obviously wants to get paid while she's out. So, she'll have to use up sick and vacation time. And then, at some point, we'll figure out how we'll transition her back to the office. There may be a period of time where she's working remotely part-time, and Mr. Donovan's working part-time. And then, at some point, she'll come back to the office. So, that's our plan. Mr. Donovan is charging $75 per hour, which is quite reasonable for the job that he's going to be doing and is expected to do. We have an agreement that is in all of your packets, and I've got hard copies here that we need to sign. Did anybody else want to say anything or chime in on what our conversation was, or anything of that sort? Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to appoint Kevin Donovan as the interim town administrator, starting Thursday, August 31st, to assist while town administrator Lisa Green is out on medical leave.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor? And just to kind of add, I mean, he is hitting the road running. I sent a message around to all department heads today, letting them know that when I spoke to him, he asked if he could have a department head meeting tomorrow morning. So, at 9 o'clock tomorrow, he'll be showing up, ready to roll. And he'll be meeting with all the department heads to find out where they're at with everything, and he'll be rolling up his sleeves to start working on the town meeting warrant. I'm sure at some point in the next week, he's gonna want to talk to each of us individually. So, you know, I'll share all contact information and leave it to you guys to kind of work with him on that. Okay. Discuss to approve the Holiday Festival Committee request to hold the annual Holiday Festival on the Hanson Green, December 10th, 2022, from 4:30 to 7:30 PM, pending fireworks company confirmation of day.
Make a motion to approve?
I do need that.
Second.
Did you make the motion? Or were you just asking?
No, I just said I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, all right, and then you said, okay, great. All in favor? And might I just add, it's one of my favorite days of the year. I love that.
One off.
So, it's a wonderful event. And, you know, they do it every year, and they're just little unsung heroes. They just chug along and do it with very little recognition. Discuss and approve updated Thomas Mill rental agreement. Quite honestly, I have no context for this item. We've got a revised Thomas Mill application here, but I don't really have a comparison of what it was before and what precipitated the change. So, I think that it's probably not the most urgent of matters at this moment. And I would therefore suggest that we not discuss it. Yep. We've got Board of Health budget update and discussion. And I believe we've got Ms. Diaz on the phone with us. Ms. Diaz, are you able to hear us?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. We certainly can hear you. And so, Ms. Diaz, as you recall, the board had, just prior to May town meeting, had requested that the health agent provide us with a plan similar to what we had received from the Recreation Commission, an outline, if you will, of what measures of austerity and cost savings the Board of Health might be able to take to narrow that gap of what is required from the town, you know, from our revenue. And I know you've had some opportunity to go through that, but that, I believe you emailed today and said that a member... Your whole board hadn't completely discussed it yet, but that you still were able to have a conversation about it?
We had a conversation about it at our last meeting, and they wanted to take a look at it before I presented it to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So, they didn't want me to present it tonight, but our next meeting isn't gonna be till sometime in 2020.
Well, that's not going to be sufficient, because honestly, we're shutting the warrant tonight. I'd be more than willing to give some leeway, and our next meeting is September 13th. But I would very strongly suggest that the Board of Health schedule a one-off meeting to have a conversation about this and make it a priority. Otherwise, I'm afraid that we're gonna be at a stalemate when it comes to town meeting.
Right. I'm sorry. Hold on for one second. I'm sorry, the train's going by. I did send in the article, and I, as a placeholder.
Right.
So, is that still gonna be a placeholder for...
We can put a placeholder in, but we will not be able to include it in the warrant when we close it, if we have not had the conversation about the budget.
Okay. And when does the warrant close?
It's right around the, I want to say the 5th. I know it's two weeks before, so probably around the 20th. I don't have a count, but right around, let's say around, let's say the 20th. Our meeting...
Next Tuesday?
Well, but we're not meeting on the 20th, so I want to be clear. Our next meeting is the 13th. And then, our walkthrough of town meeting is going to be the 27th. So, the drop-dead date for you guys to present anything to us will be at that September 13th meeting.
All right.
So, I would really highly encourage you guys to schedule a one-off meeting, if you're able to. And I certainly think it's justified, given the alternative.
Absolutely, because we actually need to talk to Todd to confirm completely any numbers for the article.
Yes, and I...
As things are changing.
And actually, I should mention, and I was very actually negligent in not mentioning this. I want to extend a huge thanks to Beth Sloan and Jean Kelly and Jean Sullivan and Todd Hassett, all of whom have stepped up in Lisa's absence, because this has been a bit of a fire drill since Friday, to work with us on the warrant. I also want to thank Kate Feidoff, even though we do pay her and she's our town council. She has put quite a few things to the side to help us and step up. And, you know, the warrant is actually in much better shape than one would have expected, given the circumstances. They've all worked together as a team to get it in, I'd say probably, it's probably about 5/8ths of the way through, which is not bad for where we're at in late August. Sometimes, we're not even there in, you know, a week before town meeting. So, it's actually quite good. And I think Kevin will be able to take that over. But I have to tell you, you know, and I know this has got nothing to do with you, Ms. Diaz, and I'm sorry for interrupting what we were discussing, but I wanted to make sure I didn't forget. Jean Kelly printed out the stuff that you guys have got here for the materials. Beth posted the meeting. Todd's stepping right up and saying he's gonna help and put the articles together. It's a classic case of why we, why I can really say with full faith and confidence, we have some of the best town employees around. When the going gets tough, they step up and they work as a team. And this is a classic case of seeing that. So, I just wanted to go on the record. So, sorry, Eileen, I know that literally had nothing to do with what you said.
No, absolutely. They should get ready for all the help that they put in.
Yep.
I will plan, I will plan on having somebody from the Board of Health at the 13th meeting. I will be in Vegas, so coming home. If I can attend the meeting, I will. If not, I will have a representative from the Board of House with the information.
I think we're all in agreement. We would like a FaceTime meeting with you on the plane home from Vegas.
Well, I wouldn't be on the plane. I'll probably be maybe at the airport, at the border, you know, but...
Okay.
Yeah, my plane's not doing good, so you might get there.
Okay. All right. Just that would zip things up a little bit. Okay, so if you could, yeah, so you may want to try to meet, I guess, with everybody in the next week or so, right? If...
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. All right, great. So, is there anything you kind of want to call out to us? I know you guys haven't met as a board and completely agreed on everything, and so, you're only speaking about what you're going to present to your board. But is there anything you want to kind of point out to us or highlight?
Well, the only thing with going over the warrant article today, we realized that we probably will be short. We thought we had enough to cover everything through program revenues, and we may be short a little. And when I say a little, I have to talk to Todd, but I know it's less than $50,000.
Okay.
We have to shore that up. And they just wanted an opportunity to look at the numbers that I pulled together, that I put in the business plan, before we presented publicly.
Sure, understandable. I would want to do the same thing if I were a member of a board and somebody was presenting.
And there are some sort of quasi-revenue sources, like we get paid for cardboard, but it comes in as a credit, so it doesn't show up as revenue. And I wanted to be able to pull some of that money out so that we have an idea of what we totally, truly get for revenue. Because we, until we've had to increase indirect costs, we thought we would not have to ask for any money this year at all.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, going forward and for the May town meeting, these are things that we're going to request from Recreation and Board of Health consistently. So, just as a heads-up, and it's not a surprise that this will be an ongoing request for you guys.
Yes. And in the past, I think the Board of Health has never taken a deep dive into the whole process for the budget, so I think it's something we have to do.
I think everybody's in full agreement on that, Ms. Diaz. Okay, that's great. Is there any question, any questions, guys? Mr. Hickey?
Yeah. This is for FY '23, am I right? Okay, so, but at May town meeting, I don't have the exact amount.
165. We held back 165. Is that where you were going with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're all set with that after October town meeting?
No. Well, that's what we're, that's what this is all about.
Right.
Is we held back the 165, which they will need to finish out the year, the second half of the year, so from October until next town meeting.
Right. Which town meeting did not approve that...
So, we approved half of the amount. So, they normally do two times the 165. We said, we're only going to approve the amount that you need through until October town meeting. And then, at October town meeting, you're going to have to come to us and prove that you're doing everything that you can, and we will fund that other 165. So, I'm not sure. Are you, am I answering the question you're asking?
You're absolutely answering it.
Okay.
So, they're waiting until the last meeting possible to present whatever they're gonna present to get the half of the other 165?
I mean, I guess that...
When they know about this in May.
I, okay, so that...
Laura, you know where I'm going with this.
I do, but I do want to... Okay, no, I...
Eileen, it's not your fault.
No, she, I, that's what I was gonna say. She picked up the ball here, and I just want to, I want to be careful about the way I say this, which is not a strong suit, so this should be good. Typically, it would be a department head that would be presenting the budget. And I think Ms. Diaz is trying to be responsive to what this board has asked, knowing that we were not satisfied with what was presented to us the prior two times that we heard from them. So, I think that she, because this has never been done to the degree that we're asking for it to be done, there's a bit of ground to make up. And so, that's my long-winded ways of saying, perhaps this time, we would give a little bit of latitude, because it's the first time. I agree with you. I don't like the last-minute stuff. It puts everybody under additional pressure. But I just would urge maybe a little bit of camaraderie, a little collaboration, given the fact given the fact that this is the first time that they're actually doing this.
Eileen?
Yes.
You said earlier tonight when you were speaking that you were going to get together with Todd. Am I correct?
Yes.
So when was the first time that this problem was mentioned to Todd? Because it, it seems to me that you should have had, and not you personally, the Board of Health and the health agent should have had meetings with Todd right after May 4th town meeting, and not be waiting all summer to get into after Labor Day.
Maybe we could put it a different way. Since, since, Eileen-
I can't say to you.
Ms. Diaz, Ms. Diaz, maybe we could put it a different way. Since the May town, since the May town meeting, what steps has the Board of Health or the, or the health agent taken to address what they knew we were asking for?
I can't speak to the health agent, but I met with Todd probably three weeks ago. And we talked about just helping me out with the article. And in fact, we, we thought we had enough to cover without having to ask for more money. I have not talked to him since then. My plan was to talk to him again to firm up all of the numbers. And the office was closed today, so-
Okay.
Other than that, I would have been able to provide you with the exact numbers.
Okay.
But I can tell you, I've met with him, I cannot tell you if the agent has.
Understood, okay. Did anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, alright, Ms. Diaz, I'm sorry that you were put on the hot seat there, but I think you know where we're coming from and why we're doing that. We're trying to really urge transparency in the budget process. And the only way that we do that is if we're consistent across the board. So we appreciate you trying to carry this ball and work and, you know, and going along with it. And again, if you can try to schedule that one-off meeting, then we will be flexible with you this one time. And we will talk about it on the 13th. But that is really our, truly our drop-dead date.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, awesome. Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Okay, and, duh, duh, duh. And then we have discussed town meeting warrant articles. So I just kind of thought we'd look at the packet that we had and see if there's anything that you guys had that you really, you know, that you were concerned with. So if you, we don't need to look at the wage and proposed personnel things unless you want to. Probably we would do that in a wage and personnel meeting separately, Mr. Weeks?
Rob, if you'd like to.
Okay. And, so we've got, again, this is a, you know, work in progress, we'd be putting it mildly. But it's kind of a compilation of the very rough drafts that everybody has forwarded.
Are you starting with special town meeting or the?
Yeah, start with the special town meeting, which is the, articles haven't been numbered yet, but to see if the town will raise an appropriate to transfer available funds from the sum of, oh, I'm sorry, I see. You guys are looking at something different.
Yeah, a little bit of a different.
Alright, hold on, let me see if I've got that. Okay.
I think this is what you're doing.
We could start, yeah, that's great.
That's the regular.
That's probably going to be a better, more elegant review than what I was about to do. Okay, so we've got the, see if the town will, the classic unpaid bills. I mean, I don't think anybody's got any, we've got to pay our bills. And then see if the town, transfer available funds, so, you know, clean up some of the accounts again of things that we owe. Then to... The recreation, I don't think that we're actually going to need Article 3 for the Recreation Commission. Oh, yes, we're going to move it from their enterprise, we're going to, we're going to give them the money that they've earned, basically, to use. So that's just kind of a bookkeeping thing. And then transfer station, we're obviously going to not discuss that tonight, because we just did, and I don't know what we're going to vote. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer for available funds, capital equipment and capital projects. Is there anything that you, you want to highlight on that? Or, wait a minute, who's the chair of cap, oh-
Chair's not here, but-
Frank, but, well, we've got like a quasecorum.
That's what I was going to say, I was going to say it out loud. So we technically have a quorum here, so I don't want to give the illusion-
We can't deliberate.
I don't want to give the, I don't want to deliberate, I don't want to give the illusion of deliberation. So I would say that you and I maybe stay out of it and-
I can leave.
No, no, that's fine, because as long as you're not deliberating about the capital improvement matrix, you're fine. So if one person can, so I don't know who feels best suited-
You're the vice chair?
Yeah, but, oh, you have the floor.
Did you, no, just to cue up, you know-
Do you want me to ask, because I do have one question?
Okay.
And it's just related to, do we happen to know, and this is not me asking as capital improvement persons, I'm just genuinely curious, as a selectman. The funds, do we have any idea if the capital improvement-
No, Todd has not given us that yet, so I don't know that.
That's my only question.
I would hope that we will be getting that soon. I know he's planning on meeting with folks tomorrow. So we don't know that. So what were the, like, I guess priorities that you guys had identified?
The biggest priority, and this is just my personal opinion, as the vice chair of it, but probably the most important one is going to be looking into the firehouse. Obviously, that's one of the more important ones on there. Unfortunately, I don't have any literature in front of me to know, remember exactly which, what we have on there for all capital items.
Now, when you say into the firehouse, are you-
They're looking, they're looking to get funding to be able to essentially have exploratory look in what the building needs to be renovated and expanded, because-
One on Main Street?
Yeah, no, 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 the one on the current fire station, our actual firehouse.
Oh, okay, alright, okay.
Our fully active, full-time firehouse.
Okay.
Do believe is also an article in the warrant about that project.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Somebody keep going on that one?
Yeah, keep going.
The building's, of course, close to its light, you know, natural lifespan, well, 40 years. It wasn't designed for that exact use, obviously. They sleep in rafters in the ceiling essentially, pretty much, in the attic. They have welcomed anybody who wants to tour it to see it, to see the situation there.
It's not pretty.
So they are hoping to get some funding, whatever the amount that is listed on there, I don't know offhand, to really see what they can do, what their options are, because they are in dire need of expanding. And obviously, with having female firefighters now in the station, they only have the one single bathroom. So I mean, that's my, what I would say is probably the most important one that I can think of offhand on there, at least. If you could come back to me momentarily, I could pull up my email real quick.
Well, we can also plan, no, you know what? We can plan on having you guys present on the 13th, which we've never done before, which is have the Capital Improvement Committee actually present to the Board of Selectmen without a, I should say, we've never done since I've been on the board. I can't, can't speak to prior boards. But, you know, rather than the fly-by-night, you know, have the discussion in the wings of town meeting, how about having an actual conversation?
I think, I think the committee would be open to that.
Okay.
We should, you should invite them to that.
So why don't we plan on, on you guys being, on the 13th? Yeah, I know, it's like an ever-expanding, um-
We're teetering on like-
I thought you said the 17th.
13th.
Yeah.
So we've got Board of Health budget-
All the committee, I don't know.
Already too quick.
I need to make sure to schedule one if anyone has it. I'm teetering on, feeling uncomfortable talking about it.
Say it's possible that the Capital Improvement Committee is going to have more information and be ready in less time than the Board of Health?
I think, I think we have a-
I don't think that's what he said.
I think the Capital Improvement Committee has a very good chair in Frank Malisi, and you should reach out to him.
I will invite him, yep.
We're teetering on where I don't feel comfortable talking.
I would like to apologize to residents of Hanson before my deer caught my headlights moment there.
No, 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 it's completely unfair of me to put you on the spot, like- No, it was unfair of me to put you on the spot, Kurt, so I'm sorry to do that.
I liked it.
Okay, and to see stabilization fund, I mean, these are, a lot of these are just sort of like housekeeping. And then we get to, you know, post-employment benefits. I'm not saying these aren't important, but they're not the things that we're likely going to have robust conversations about at town meeting. Then we've got the housekeeping article for community preservation. This is interesting. Why have we got this in the October town meeting? I question that.
Which article you want?
The Community Preservation Article 8. We vote for that every May, because they have to have 1010 and 70 allocated across the different accounts for community preservation, and that's already been done. So I'm not really sure what they're trying to achieve. This, this may be like an old article, like a catch basin article that they threw in there. Qualified Massachusetts, okay, well, this is interesting. So Planning Board is see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate money for a registered engineering firm to conduct a roadway and drainage infrastructure study of Litchfield Lane and Proudfoot Way, and prepare a report of findings for submission to Hanson Planning Board. I believe that this is because, once again, these are private ways, and something jumped the tracks, but, oh, well, here we go, there's an explanation. These streets were acceptable as public ways in 2006. Quick claim deeds, oh, yeah, okay. For the roadways and drainage easements were never obtained within the 120 days after the town meeting as required. So now they've got to go back and take another look to make sure that if we're going to accept it, that nothing dramatic has changed since that time. So we're trying to work on that. HVAC system for the library and senior center, which Ms. Stoffer explained to us at our last meeting. Wage and personnel article. Vote appropriate to, a sum of money for the in-lishen. What is in-lishen? Is that an actual word or just a mis-
Hold on right now, what's the word?
Mis- It's I-N-L-I, I wonder if it's demolition. Yes, it is, it's demolition, they, they, I was like, this is going to be my new vocabulary word today. I think it's the demolition of the little funky garage next to the fire station on Main Street that's looking a little past prime. And I'm happy about that building, because I think that's helping us do our part to clean up Main Street and get things moving in the right direction. Yes, Mr. Tarvis?
Do we know what's inside of it, just out of curiosity, just on the side of history, just curious? I don't know what's-
I don't know, but I definitely would reach out to Mr. Thompson. I think Chief Thompson, he would be very open to you exploring if there are historic artifacts in there. And I'm sure it's not his inclination to get rid of those things.
Right.
I'm sure he would probably either bring them to the fire station or put them in the auxiliary fire station. And actually, I'm sure Charlie Baker or, you know, I'm sure he knows what's in there, because he cleans all the buildings.
Not the governor.
Yeah. Okay, and to see if the town, oh, so this is the cannabis delivery. And we did hear back from, from, I reached out after our last meeting, because we had said, "Hey, what's going on and why haven't we heard from them?" They are working on getting us the information that they need. And they made a commitment to get it to us within the next week. They are in the midst of a production, so it's a little, little bit tricky. I also reached out yesterday to them, this isn't totally on point, but somewhat, to see if you, Mr. Heel, and-
Mrs. Rain.
Mrs. Rain, and were you able to tour the facility?
No.
Oh, alright, well, did you want to be added to the tour?
I'll take it, yeah.
Okay, and then also Mr. Ernest, who's a new member of our Economic Development Committee, because the Economic Development Committee had toured the facility. And so, and I would love to have also our town planner, Tony DeFrayis, toured as well, since he's doing a lot of work on this. And I haven't heard back, but when I do, I asked Mr. Greenberg to throw out a couple of times that might be work for them. I know he did tell us when he was here that you guys would need to don hazmat suits. I'm not sure that's what they call them, but that's, he sent you what they are.
I'm just, I'm just really nervous about another, like, last town meeting was, was, didn't go well with the marijuana thing.
Yeah.
And the fact that they're two weeks later, going to be three weeks late before giving us this information, I hope, I'm just hoping that we're going to have a clean warrant article for them, that the town will understand and be able to-
I, I agree, and I think as we discussed at the meeting, when they were here, actually, they need to provide more data. And we need to get that information from them in order for people to understand the numbers that are involved. And I think what we've agreed is we will put a placeholder, but if we don't have this information by the time we close the warrant, the information we requested, it will not be in this town anymore.
It'll just be next, totally.
Yes, Mr. Weeks?
Could I, could I just state, because you took the words out of my mouth? What I would say is, whatever we do needs to be equitable across the board. And I want to support businesses, this is, this is awesome, it's great. I'm glad that they're being responsive. We just went through with the Board of Health, who are volunteers, trying to do all this stuff. So if we're giving them a hard date of the 13th, then-
That would be the date.
Yeah, but it has to be across the board. So if anything, in my opinion, I would consider this board to say that if we're giving slack for one, anything else cannot pass the 13th.
In all honesty, and I just have to say this, they may have very well sent this to Ms. Green. I don't know. You know, so I've got to have Mr. Donovan come in and look at emails that have come into Lisa. She's been working from the hospital, which is not the ideal scenario, but trying to prioritize. So I don't want to say for certain that they haven't sent it to us, but if they haven't, I agree, Mr. Weeks, we will stick, we will stick with the 13th. And that's the hard date, and honestly, it's the favor we do ourselves, because we need to have thoughtful, well-planned-out articles with the back, you know, backup that people need to make an informed decision. And that did not happen at the last town meeting.
Yeah, I just, but for the sake of honoring everybody's time that has been put into all of this, everybody has things going on, everybody has a lot of stuff happening. I want to make sure that everybody gets the same level of treatment, that one person's issues is not more important than the next person's issues, and we have to do that. I would also say that the 13th, I'd like to see it done. Not, not, not a best draft, but if we're requiring everybody to have it done by the 13th, that whatever the conversation is back and forth needs to be finalized and presented by the 13th.
Yep, and I, and I think that's one of the conversations I'm going to have with Mr. Donovan, amongst many others. Okay, so that is the delivery of cannabis. And then, yeah, so I think we need to talk about this article. So this is the conservation to replenish their, their, their conservation fund. And I think Mr. Clemmons explained, did a great job of explaining that. They've actually been doing quite a bit of trail maintenance and signage, and anybody that's getting out there and walking any of the properties is seeing some significant progress, and I really commend them on that. And, and they've got a new member who's even going to be helping an alternate member. So I think if you're asking volunteers to do a job, then you need to give them the money that they need to do the job. And it's a pretty modest amount. So does anybody have any, yeah, okay, I think that's kind of a no-brainer. And then I think we voted on the Little Cedar Swamp. Mr. Hickey was, was a no vote on it. But I think the remainder of the board felt that it should be in the warrant. The, and this is the one that gives me a bit of pause. This next one, Article 15, is the conservation agent to bring them to full-time. And I know that Mr. Clemmons explained that there was a lot that Mr. Skellinger cannot do, our conservation agent cannot do, as a result of not being full-time. My concern is that I, I, of course, I think we asked to make sure that he checked with Todd and that the funding was there. And you're rarely going to find somebody who's more in favor of conservation. I'm a big cheerleader of conservation. But my concern is that if we're coming to a town meeting where we are asking to add a part-time person to our office, and the library is asking to make a full-time custodian, although they've got the money, and it's really just a shifting, but the optics are that that's a full-time position. I just think we might be pushing the envelope here. But I, you know, kind of would want you guys to chime in. And in particular, Mr. Heel, since you're on the Conservation Commission, what are your thoughts?
Are you, are you thinking it's too much to ask of the town?
I think it's too much to ask at one town meeting. And I, I just think that we have to prioritize which positions we need to add. And, and I, again, this is not a value judgment at all about how important conservation is or whether we need more hours. I think that argument could be made for a number of the other offices, that they may, may need additional personnel. It's $26,000, but it's also benefits. I don't know where you guys are. I mean, you might say, you know what, if Todd says we can afford it and it's sustainable, then let's support it. So that's why I just thought we'd discuss it.
That's how I, that's how I feel, I'm at, I know there are things that are going undone and that should be done, and there are people that are coming in trying to reach the conservation agent during business hours, and their door is closed. That happens for a lot of people.
Okay.
Personally, I think that it's needed, and I think that the value add for the $26,000-plus benefits is, is minor compared to actually him being able to provide the time for the town.
Okay, great. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering whether we might be able to get, and I can reach out to Mr. Clemmons if you want, but I'm wondering if we might be able to get some kind of a, if we hire a full-time conservation agent, here's the additional things we could achieve. Because I, you know, because it's, it's, you know, the agent's workload warrants full-time. It's just not robust enough of an explanation of, I need, you know, like, we could apply for grants. We could, you know, I don't know what those things are, but, you know, is, do you think that's something that we could work on?
I think Mr. Clemmons does have a list, and I think he was trying to keep this shorter than, than, you know-
And I'm not sure that the entire list needs to be in here, but we definitely need more of an explanation than what we've got if we're going to try to advocate for a full-time person.
Okay, would you like to reach out?
I truly want to know. I wanted to ask if I didn't.
With the information I have, I'd vote no.
Okay.
I mean, I could tell you why. You pretty much said it before with asking the town for other positions. I mean, I could tell you why, uh, you pretty much said it before with asking the town, uh, for other positions. And me being the liaison, uh, to the Council on Aging and the Senior Center, I could tell you that Mary Collins lost a posi- a position twelve years ago, and that the Finance Committee, even though it was approved by the town, did not recommend that twenty-four thousand dollar part-time position
It was a battle.
To help Mary, where, you know, I, Ed, I don't, I don't wanna go against, you know, swamp water and tadpoles and little trees and stuff, but forty percent of the town is sixty and older, and I'll keep saying that until it goes to sixty-five percent. Or, you know, or I mean forty-five percent or fifty percent, which it will. Mary's by herself, and the Finance Committee said that that position is not sustainable for next year. So I don't know how we can make this position sustainable.
That's actually an excellent point, I think one of the things that we always worry about is we don't wanna be making somebody full-time and then pulling back.
Yeah, right.
Oh, definitely not.
You know, whoopsie, Frank, we, we can't afford it this year, so button up. You know, that, that doesn't seem particularly fair or responsible. So, um, those are all, you're our Conservation Liaison, and you happen to be on the Conservation, so, um, if you don't mind kinda trying to tease some of that information out, uh, Mr. Weeks?
I, I would just say, you know, just, just to simplify it even more, for me, I mean, there's a whole bunch of positions that have to get funded. And for town meeting is a place where the town decides where they wanna put their dollars. So I don't think there's a bad, there's a bad point in putting whatever we need on the docket, doing it responsibly, presenting it responsibly, and really putting the onus on where they wanna spend their to- tax dollars. I mean, wherever, we can say all day long, cause we, we represent, whether it be liaison or on, holding multiple boards, we have our passion projects, we have where we think the money should go. It's the taxpayers' money, it's the taxpayers' town, we just let them decide, and we just present.
Well, I, I guess that's true, but it is our warrant, and so we are responsible for, for putting in articles that we truly believe at this point in time are in the best interest of the town. So although the town, um, you know, department heads and all the folks, you know, that are the different committees and everything, put forth the articles, ultimately, we're supposed to be vetting them to determine, is this the right time? And do we think this is the best spend for our dollars at this point in time?
No, I get that, I, I honestly, I, I respect that opinion, I get that opinion, um, but I still fall back on the townspeople know what's best for the town, and we would get, let them decide, and, but I, but I totally get what you're saying, a thousand percent.
I just think honestly, I, I'm sort of neutral at it, uh, uh, on it, I just wanna see more facts. I, I really just wanna see more facts.
Which I agree with that as well.
Yeah.
Laura, I agree with Joe, where maybe the Finance Committee doesn't approve this five-oh, but the Select Board may say, uh, approve three to two. Not, not approve.
Or defer the town meeting.
Exactly, so like Joe said, let the, let the tax.
Alright, well, so then we'll see. Okay, and actually, the next, um, article, um, Mr. Tarvis is, to see if the town will vote to transfer a hundred thousand dollars for available funding source for feasibility and space needs for the fire headquarters. So, I, that's the one that you're saying is on the capital improvement.
One thing that I just think, it's in the, they need to get it done at some point, but if, the more we kick it off, the more expensive it's gonna be. It's already gone on fifty thousand dollars from what it was two years ago, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars each year.
It's not gonna get cheaper.
It's, no, and they're expecting, that's under what they actually expect, the most stuff there, but it's just gonna get worse, so.
Okay, um, and wow, I di- I didn't realize that building was forty-two years old, so, um, you know, and, and, and in this explanation, it says, you know, um, avoid, uh, we wanna make sure that it's up to current fire code. And OSHA, there's some irony there, um, and, um, that there's adequate space for staffing and operational administration.
The building was actually a senior center related, so.
Yes, that, that, um, that meeting space seems to take up quite a bit of, um, space, and I'm not sure how often it's used. So, that'll be good, we definitely wanna support those guys, did anybody have any thoughts or comments on that, or?
No, I, I think it's, it's, it's much needed, and I think it's showing up in capital improvement in here in case one funding source dries up. So just give the opportunity to be able to fund some way.
Mr. Hickey, any thoughts, or you good to go on that one?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and of course, we're not voting tonight, we'll vote actually once we've got the whole entire warrant, but I just thought it'd be worthwhile for us to kinda do a mental exercise of going through it, so we're not hearing and talking about it for the first time at our dry run. So, um, okay, um, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate money to increase administrative assistance wage. So, uh, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Oh, and I think this is redundant, this one's repeat, repeat, um, of Article fifteen. So as we know, we want to, um, hire folks that, um, are highly qualified, and we want to retain those people. And so we want to have more latitude to increase pay, um, as we see performance. So that's really what Article eighteen is, as I said, Article nineteen is, um, redundant, so that's the, the Conservation Agent going full-time. See if the town, and then Article twenty is the one that, um, where we're adding, uh, to a part-time person to the office, and I really think this is gonna be so critical. And I know that we've discussed that, um, ideally, we would like to advocate for full-time, but we're going to crawl before we walk. And, um, and, you know, and I think this gives us an opportunity if we hire a part-time person, and then we find with one and a half, uh, folks doing administrative work in our office, if that still isn't sufficient, then we come back to the table and we figure out, you know, we advocate that we need a full-time person. But certainly, a part-time person is better than no additional help. So, um, anybody have any?
I, I mean, I just worry a little bit about, this is just another position, and I, I think this is important also, I'm not.
This one is sustainable, and Mr. Hassett has told Lisa that it's sustainable.
I don't understand why that one's sustainable in the conservation.
I, I'm not sure. Oh, oh, no, I, he didn't say anything about conservation.
No, 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 I mean, but, no, I know, but.
He said si- the senior position may not be, he didn't say.
Right, the senior position.
He didn't opine on.
I, I needed to discuss that a little bit, I don't wanna go to.
Yeah, I don't want my words being mixed up, that was the Finance Committee that said it was sustainable, not Todd.
Right, right, and as you recall, Todd really didn't have a, a horse in that race at all. And I think he, it, you know, Todd's perspective is typically like, look, I'm the town accountant, you guys tell me what your priorities are. And I will try to balance things accordingly. We can't do everything, it's just like you can't do everything with your own personal finances, you know? So, uh, we've gotta balance it, and I think, but, so I, I don't think it was Todd on, on the, on the, um, on the, uh, senior position.
So the, did, in May, did we not hire to, to vote to hire a part-time?
We did, but it was a ba- it was a bit of a battle.
But it did go through.
It did go through.
I just, I, I thought you was, so what you're talking about was a different position at another time that didn't go through?
No, it's, no, the, what he's saying is at the May Town Meeting, there was a warrant article to add help to the Senior Center. FinCom had voted either four, one, or five-zero not to add it.
Okay, and the town then said, yes.
And Mr. Hickey got up and advocated, I, several other people did, I believe Mrs. Rain, and it was before she had been elected, had gotten up and said, um, and pointed to her, so she's here, just in case you were.
She's very small.
She's, she's hair and spirit, um, and so, um, had advocated, and people felt pretty passionately that when Mary Collins asks for help.
That's big, yeah, and that's what you would mention, yeah.
And you need to listen. Um, and she performs so many, um, functions there that people, that are misunderstood or not even understood at all in terms of the social service aspect of her job and how important it is, um, for the seniors and others. It's not just, you know, really elderly people.
Almost anybody, I think, stops in.
Yeah, so, um, so it did end up passing, but it was a, a bit of a standoff between FinCom and the Board of Selectmen. And it might have gone differently, because, um, as you may or may not know, at town meeting, um, we vote on the FinCom recommendations. So they're the, so it's what they're recommending, so instead of the, uh, some towns do Select Board, some do FinCom. Historically, our town has always done FinCom, and I'm sure there's a reason, and, and we can always, you know, we can always act, get on the floor of town meeting and have a conversation, hopefully collegial, um, and we did, and that was one that we were able to win. But, one of the reasons we were able to do it was because at that particular town meeting, we were really pinching pennies, we held back the money from the Board of Health. If we had not held back the money from the Board of Health at that town meeting, we would not have had the money to fund the senior person. So that totally wasn't even in, on the agenda, or even in this article and this warrant, but, but I just thought it was some context, uh, for that.
I guess the, the question of this is, is, is everything in this warrant sustainable? I mean, is that, you know?
Todd, Todd's going to go through this, okay? It, just, um, so where we're, just so you know where we're at, cause I know this is your first town meeting. Typically, this, this conversation has not happened, at least not in the five years that I've been on the board, where we're looking at it, do you remember it happening, okay? Where, where you're looking at it in advance of the, the financial team looking at it and, you know, and, and, and talking, so this is really just a rough pass, like wishlist, I would kind of look at it like a wishlist. It will get winnowed down. There will be things that we say, could, we can't do that in October, could we push it out till May? We need more information, we need a more solid dollar amount, um, can you defer this, or do that? So there will be some pushback, this is just a very first rough cut at it, for us to kind of be able to have those dialogues with the department heads and the committees, um, in advance, in a thoughtful way. Okay, so, um, that's where we're at on that, so, um, alright, so that's, that was our, um, the part-time person for the clerical. Then we've got the, um, impure red pavement recycler trailer of fifty-three thousand dollars. It, it occurred to me, um, at our last meeting, Mr. Shav was there, I did not know he was there, cause he was buried amongst, um, you know, uh, folks from Alden Way. I'd like to have him probably come to our meeting and kind of explain, um, how he's prioritized these, and whether this is an immediate need, um, or a need that could be deferred. Did the capital improvement here for Mr. Shav yet on that? Okay, alright, so we all need to have a conversation, I'm sure he's, he's done his research and he's got an explanation. And, I mean, he's written a little explanation here, but I'd, I'd kinda like to hear it from the horse's mouth. Then we've got the, uh, eighty-three thousand dollars to purchase and equip a vent rack, sidewalks, snow removal, and sweeping tractor with brush on them. Which is needed, uh, you know, I, I mean, I don't know if it's, if we need to buy it, but we do need that piece of equipment generally, and I believe we used to either borrow it or rent it. And I know this is probably a, a little bit anal, but, um, I really, um, think that the condition of sidewalks and whether they're re-washed and kept clean is very reflective of, um, the pride that a town takes, um, in itself. So I really, if this is gonna help us do a better job with that, um, or, you know, then I'm all for it, if that's what, where Jameson's calling with that.
I'm just a little confused about capital improvement, and that this is, this, would this wasn't supposed to come to us? To the Capital Improvement Committee?
Should've.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll have to, uh, keep in mind, Jameson is relatively new in the role, um, so we'll have to.
Updates, I was gonna kinda discuss some of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, it is like a, in actually like a really positive way, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Pro- probably there's, might be a need to, um, have Mr. Malisi reach out to everybody just one more time with feeling, make sure you got it on the capital improvement matrix, cause that's the rule. So, um, but I'm sure we'll get on there. And then, uh, seventy-four thousand for stormwater management, MS four permitted related items. That's a requirement, really, um, to comply with the EPA, um, and municipal, um, regulations. And then, see if the town will vote for fifty thousand dollars to the townwide fuel account. I don't think we need much of an explanation for that, we all know that fuel costs are going up. As he puts it, drastic increases. And then we've got Article twenty-five, uh, again, MS, um, MS four, retention pond cleaning, uh, to comply with, with, uh, stormwater and drainage MS, uh, four compliance. At some point, I'm expecting some of these articles, um, maybe the next, uh, cycle will be presented by our newly revitalized and newly renamed Drainage and Stormwater Management Committee. But for now, it's, it's Jameson. Okay, and then, uh, see if the town will reallocate Hawksav High Ability Build, uh, Development Fund to include a feasibility study for alternative location at Indian Head Street. Now, as you will recall, um, we have not put a bow on the, um, likelihood or feasibility of the light control building on Hawksav being used for a highway, uh, facility. Mrs. Rain is taking over, um, moving that forward and hopefully putting a bow on it. Our town planner has expressed a very strong, um, opinion, which I believe, um, Mr. Shav, our, our Highway Director also agrees with, that, um, Hawksav for a number of reasons is probably not a great location for a highway building, because it's far from the epicenter of town, it is near a resource area, um, and if there's any type of spillage, which there's likely to be with the highway building, that, uh, it could really be problematic. But again, a little bit more work is gotta be done to put a bow on that and put it to rest. But in the interim, I think what Jameson's trying to do here is acknowledge that that has not been completed, but acknowledge that alternatives are being looked at and start moving in that direction, so we're not talking about this ten years from now. So, uh, I think, I say good for him, we're gonna need a dollar amount though on that one. And to see if the town will raise or appropriate, okay, didn't we already have the HVAC system from the library? Or am I misremembering, alright, so we've got a, another, um, our warrant, our warrant is already shrinking. Um, we've lost two articles that were duplicates, this is great, we're heading in the right direction. See if the town will, oh, this is the security cameras that Miss, um, Miss, um, Karen Stolfer, um, had talked to us about. They've already got some security cameras, but she wants to, um, improve up there. It's a rather attractive area for vandals, um, lots of little nooks and crannies. And then this is the custodial position, which she talked to us about, um, moving the, kind of melding those two part-time positions into a full-time position. See if the town will vote to change the name of Recreation Commission, I think Frank, uh, Mr. Malisi discussed that. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town with gender-neutral wording, specifically by deleting the wording Board of Selectmen, um, with Select Board. And, uh, you know, I'm gonna have to work with, I don't know why we keep putting this explanation in, cause it really triggers people. And, and just for the record, I am not the person who is advocating for this. This is sort of state, a statewide kind of initiative, and we're just kind of getting our act together a little bit behind the eight ball.
Can we have somebody change that explanation, just say because the name has changed?
I just think we just need to s- I mean, I don't know why we have to get into.
I don't think we have to anymore, cause town meeting.
Stuff, it just seems a bit over-engineered for an explanation.
I think the explanation changed now, because now it's because in the, at the last town meeting, it was change of select.
Correct.
Now we're doing it, cause we have to change the name.
We don't need the explanation that explains why.
But I know, uh, I, there were quite a few people who were irritated by the expla- more by the explanation than what we were asking to do.
Right.
There were some people who were irritated by us requesting to, to name it Select Board, but we're gonna get with the program.
Debate was had in May.
For twenty-twenty-two here. I will answer to anything, Selectmen, Select Board, Chair, Chairman, as that been called, Chairwoman, Madam, I don't even care.
Select people.
To see, I, well, you know what, I look at it, and it's, it's, each to his own or her own, but I look at it as, it's an archaic term. And, uh, and so I don't think people mean any disrespect, and I, you know, just sort of take it that way. But that's me, and that doesn't mean everybody else feels that way.
This is an actual question.
Yes.
Just because with all the changing and stuff like that, there are of course a lot of people who are, you know, vicious on either side of it, and for or against it, whatever. But is it up to, like, say, I would say, Joe wanted to say, you know, I identify as a Selectman, I identify as a select person, you can choose your own perspective.
Getting into that level, I think that's why they, I think that's.
People ask without a voice and stuff.
They're trying to neutralize it, so we're not getting into who's who in the zoo and what's happening with your own individual identity. I don't think that's where we're going with that, although the explanation would seem to imply that.
Right.
So that's why I think it's more about the explanation being tweaked.
I don't, I don't disagree, I just, I still stand by the point that the explanation. I just, I still stand by the point that the explanation was probably recycled from, from May. The explanation now.
Yes.
Is that the town meeting voted to change it to select board and that's what we're doing. We're housekeeping and making sure.
Which is being consistent, yep.
Yes.
Um, I, very, very good point, Mr. Weeks, duly noted. Um, okay, and to see if the, um, okay, once again, I believe we've already, I feel like I'm in Groundhog Day here. Um, we already had that article, so we don't need the, the part-time person in the office. We already discussed, we want that person, but we don't need to have the article three times.
If I can just ask, are we going to a three-person select board?
Next page.
Yeah, no kidding.
No, you and Ed are on the.
What happened to us?
What happened to me and you?
Flip the page, you're on the next one. Because I was trying to figure out why.
Are we really, Joe?
Yeah, because I was trying to figure out why the only, you, you two were only listed on the last page.
Oh, yeah, okay, nevermind.
Oh, it was the opposite for you than it was for us, okay.
Um, but a serious, a serious question going back to Article thirty about, um, the recreation, um, commission changing and then to the Camp Kewaunee Commission or Committee. Um, that would leave the town hands without a recreation department. And my fare with that is that it could become, um, the wedding committee. Because if you change it to Camp Kewaunee, then there is no recreation for the town and it could strictly.
Well, so they're not changing their responsibilities. Um, it, so I think what I, and you just actually reminded me that when Mr. Malisi was here, um, discussing this, I had made a mental note, but a few things have happened in the interim, um, to, um, go back and look at the creation of that commission, right? Like, I always like to go back to the primary source. Um, was it called, you know, was it just the, the select board decided that they were gonna name it the Recreation Commission? Or was it created as a Recreation Commission with certain duties? And if that's the case, which I believe it is, um, then those duties still remain. So for instance, like the Cove, which is I think probably where you're going, like, they're still gonna be responsible for that. That doesn't change it. I think where Mr. Malisi was going with this was, right now, they feel this weird pressure to be everything to everybody for all recreation in the town, when in reality, they really only own the footprint that's Camp Kewaunee.
Right.
Um, so I think he just wants it to be more properly named to reflect, we only own what happens in this little area here. We're not responsible for running, you know, Christmas programs and Halloween programs because it's not, kind of implies that a little bit, um, versus like some of the other towns like Whitman and Rockland. They've got a recreation committee. And so I think that this is probably gonna be one of those things that we'll end up talking at that, thought at that strategic planning session. Because I think, yes, we can honor what Mr. Malisi is saying, but I think we're gonna have to create an actual Recreation Commission that is responsible for actually creating recreation programs in the town.
Yes.
But I'm just one vote and I don't know what you guys.
That was almost exactly what I was just gonna suggest, basically. We do need a Recreation Commission.
Mr. Tarvis.
Um, what about has many towns done where you've parks and recs have a single commission? Is there any reason against that?
There is no, no, there's, there's.
I just worry about another bloated board, you know?
I get that there, but I, there is no reason why we couldn't do that, except that the objective of the parks and fields right now is very strategic. Um, as Mr. Hickey will tell you, having spent a while doing it, you know, it's about the fields, the fields maintenance, the scheduling, you know, all of that. And, and again, I think if you layer on this additional responsibility, that might be outside of their wheelhouse, right? I mean, if I've signed up, like we saw Mr. Cahill, he's a lovely man, but he probably doesn't want to be running five K races and events on the town hall green. That isn't really what he thought he was signing up for or any of the other members. So this is why, I think this is something that, uh, I know when, uh, Mr. Bloss was on, um, and Mr. Dyer and Mr. Mitchell, one of the things we had generally talked about, not in any specific way, but just generally talked about, like, should we have like a, either umbrella organization that's called like Recreation? And then these are like subcommittees or a separate Recreation Commission that's responsible for that? So, you know, we can make this up, that, you know, this is like, we can, we can create this. This is the way we want it to look and the way we think it's gonna work. So, um, I think this is definitely a topic, I believe, that came up with Ms. Dawn or the consultant that we hired to do, um, help us with the strategic plan.
And this is gonna come up at town meeting. I mean, the people, the people at town are gonna say, well, what about the Recreation Department? We no longer have a Recreation Department. I didn't realize that their responsibility was just that one property. I thought it, based on the name, I thought it was, you know, five K races and all the rest.
Yeah, and, and again, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Malisi, but I know in the past, other Recreation Commission members were, you know, like criticized pretty roundly, like, well, what are you guys doing for recreation in the town? And it's like, that's, you know, like, I know that's what we're named, but that's not really what we're responsible for. So I think clarity and the naming is important and I think that's where he's trying to get. And I cer- certainly wanna, if we have people that are volunteering to do a job and they're telling us that they think that this is what they would like to see happen, because they need that to happen, to have clarity about what their purpose is, I have no problem supporting that. Mr. Weeks.
Just as easy as we can change a name, we can change it back. I feel like, um, for me, Camp Kewaunee has had a, and the Recreation Commission has had a identity crisis for as long as I can remember.
Mm-hmm.
And they've presented what they feel right now is an option to, um, rectify that, maybe give some vision and give us an opportunity to maybe figure it out. Will it work? I have no idea. But I, I'm willing to trust what they're trying to do and see if the townspeople will back that. And if that's the answer, then yes, and then we take next steps to figure out if a Recreation Commission separate or going back to what it was is fine. But I do know that we've been struggling with recreation financially, from a recreation perspective, from pretty much every identity a- aspect you can think of. I'm willing to try whatever to see if it works. Uh, we made that commitment to the finance committee when they were pushing back. We made that commitment to the Recreation Commission and we owe it to the townspeople to try to find an identity for them and see if it works. Yeah, so just on those merits alone, I just wanna give it a shot.
I completely agree, um, and, um, and I, you know, I, I might add, and again, not totally on topic, but a bit on topic, I have been extremely impressed with the job that that commission has done and the turnaround that they have executed. And that actually, and then, in, in, um, in addition, when Mr. Clemmons was talking about all of the work that they had done on the trails, it got me to thinking, um, which always gets me in trouble. Um, what can we do as a board to recognize the efforts of these folks that are volunteering for the town? Of course, we can't give them more than fifty dollars worth of gift. We don't even have a budget to do that. We'd probably all have to just chip in ourselves to do whatever it is. But I, it kind of got me thinking like, could we have a?
Volunteer day?
Yes, like a, like a, a luncheon or if we really have low budget of breakfast, which should really be muffins and don- and, you know, donuts and coffee or something like more. But just something to say like, thank you for taking your personal time to dedicate to this cause. Yes, Mr. Weeks.
I just wanna add just one more layer to that because I think it's a great idea. I would just say, I'm very happy.
And employees too, I'm sorry.
Well, and employees, but I'm very happy with what the Recreation Commission's been able to do this, this far and, and all the committees. But it goes without saying that they, they didn't start it, people came here before them. They are coming here after them.
Yeah.
So whatever we do is for anybody that serves.
Absolutely, yeah.
And you, you kind of pay homage to people that have, have trailblazed and tried ideas. Some have been successful, some not so much, but everybody's built on something else. And I feel like whatever we do should be open to just current ones, but does anybody that's ever done it?
I'm totally fine with that. So I assume you're gonna be for, for, you know, uh, paying for this whole soiree, right?
Oh, you know, I have a five cent deposit, I think on these things, I'll start collecting.
That's our first five cents, we're good. Um, so again, we can think about that, but I just thought, and the second reason why I thought it would be a good idea is, um, and we talked about this early on with, with this board. Um, people really tend to stay in their swim lane in these, um. I'm sorry, apparently somebody's, oh. Um, people really tend to stay in their swim lanes, um, on various committees and they don't cross-pollinate and talk to one another. And I thought it would be a good opportunity for people to meet one another. So that if, like, Mr. Tarvis has got a, you know, and he's actually not a good poster child for this because he already does it, but, you know, but if Mr. Tarvis, for instance, needed to talk to Mr. Clemmons about something on conservation, that you've got that connection and you're not meeting for the first time when you've got a project or something, you met him at a casual little breakfast where everybody was able to kind of swap business cards and, you know, and, and, and that type of thing. So we can work on, you know, we don't, we don't, I don't have any meat on the bone right now, but I just thought I'd throw it out to you guys. I'd similarly like to do something to show appreciation to the town hall employees. And I know some people will say, oh, they get paid and they get paid damn well to do the job and they get benefits, et cetera, et cetera. But you know what?
Step up to the plate.
They really do step up to the plate. And, uh, case in point, this fire drill that we've just been through really highlighted for me, what I've always known, but, you know, when you see people in action, um, it's an entirely different thing. So thoughts on that?
Um, I agree, but I checked with Todd, um, many times, um, there's no money.
I honestly think we'd have to fund it ourselves. I'm being a hundred percent honest. And I, and I would feel fine doing that. I don't wanna put other people under pressure. That's why I'm saying like, let's not do some soiree. We're not looking at the two-hundredth anniversary soiree for volunteers. Um, you know, but we're, we're, just like, honestly, it isn't really even what we serve or, or the food or anything, like, you know, little certificates of recognition, notes of thanks, some little, small little token, you know, of, I don't know what that is, um, and then a donuts and coffee or something.
Planning meeting, maybe? You talking about it?
Yeah.
Even with that, even small tokens, um, it does add up. Um, and are we talking town hall employees? Are we talking employees of the entire town?
The whole town.
Are we talking volunteers that are probably on, you know?
Looking a couple thousand people.
As soon as possible. Then you're gonna find out that it's really just, all the committees are comprised of Kurt, Frank, Frank Malisi, Laura Kebbit, maybe Teresa.
I mean, it is a lot of the same minnow swimming in different pools, so.
You're gonna find out, you'd be like, oh, it's ten thousand people, shows like ten people on all the committees.
It's this group right here.
Well, we can talk about, what I do think is that the volunteer piece, maybe we could talk about us chipping in to do. And then we can, we can, we could put a warrant article in for, you know, six hundred dollars or seven hundred dollars or something, um, for our town hall employees. I, I don't, we gotta put our money where our mouth is. If we wanna retain people, um, then we need to start being an employer that treats people decently.
Uh, when you say put our money where our mouth is, are you talking my money personally or using all my personal money?
Yeah.
I have none. Thank you, all town employees. That's what you're gonna get out of me.
People can give whatever they have. Like, I'm not, we wouldn't be, be pressuring anybody. If people can't give, then they don't need to.
Yeah.
Um, so, but anyway, we can talk about that.
I was gonna say, this is a planning meeting, good conversation, I think it's.
Yeah, we could, it's a definitely good, um, me. Now, I got these last minute, but they are warrant articles. They're from, um, Mr. Moberg, our esteemed IT director. Um, and I don't know why I only have three. Um, okay, uh, this will be a little bit, do you guys mind sharing?
Okay, it's only two, three copies, okay.
So he, um, or maybe they're, actually, did I just, yeah, you know what? Let me, um, can I take those back for a second? I'm sorry. They're three different articles, yeah, they're three different articles. Um, okay, so, um, you'll just have to take my word for it and then they'll, they'll be updated. But he did literally just put these in the mailbox. Um, see if the town will vote to transfer, um, twenty-five thousand, four hundred dollars, um, to, for the purpose of rewiring all data and phone cabling inside, inside town hall. I think we can all agree that is necessary. I personally am sick of the buzzing that I get sometimes when I call. Um, explanation cable terminate, seventy dual, five hundred and fifty MHZ. I can see this is gonna be challenging. Cat six CMR rated locations, uh, first and second floors of town hall. This is needed to move over to new phone system for town hall. Also included is relocation of current IDF to utility closet. Install one new rack wire management and cat six panels. Does anybody have any questions? Because I can answer technical questions.
Yeah, you can answer that.
Absolutely. Um, okay, um, and then to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, uh, thirty-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars for the purpose of installing security cameras. So we already knew about that at Senior Center, um, and, and town hall, so that he's all inclusive of that. And then nine thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, um, for the purpose of purchasing Horizon Three AI. Explanation Horizon Three AI offers the town internal and external PEN, capital P E N, testing, which will help us find software and hardware vulnerabilities. Um, so obviously, we've hired Mr. Moberg for a purpose. These all seem fairly reasonable in terms of dollar amounts. They're gonna increase security thou- you know, security for us and, um, hopefully, you know, again, stop the buzzing on the phones at town hall, Ed.
Yeah, the middle one is already listed in the articles, right?
It, it is, except, um, the middle one, um, I think we have just the library on that one. And I think this is after, um, I believe that Ms. Stolfer had submitted that before Steve got back the final quote.
Okay, but they're gonna be hopefully the same compatible systems.
Oh, yeah, it will be a consolidated article.
Yeah, okay.
It'll be consolidated. Mr. Weeks.
Um, no, I believe to those, um, but if we're, just from memory, unless Frank, um, pulled them, I thought he had more capital improvement articles for the warrant. Didn't he have one reducing the board from seven to five?
He did, and I don't know where that went, um, so we're gonna have to go through. As I said, this is a walkthrough, so, you know.
No, totally fine, I just don't want it to get dropped. Because there were, I think there were four places, four placeholders. I saw one article in here, which I think might suffice for two of them, maybe? I just gotta get an opinion on that because one of them is gonna be accepting, well, no, so they have one in here for transfer of the money.
And then the rename.
Uh, that's, that's recreation.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so this, this capital, yeah.
Oh, you were saying capital improvement.
So one was the transfer of funds, uh, into the capital improvement, uh, bucket, um, the line item budget. There was another one to reduce the, the number of, of, of people. There was another one to accept the matrix. There was another one to accept the priorities of the matrix, which all of those are obviously dependent upon,
Yep.
you know, the, the article that's in here. And then there was another one, and I, I don't remember what it was, but.
It was to stat town meeting early.
Yes.
No, that was, that was Frank's personal one. There were, there were four.
But that's not in here either, though.
No, it's not, but you, so you're a hundred percent right there. I don't remember what it was.
Mr. Tarvis.
Capital improvement, I have four, for capital improvement, I have four articles.
Yeah, the five, the five year versus ten.
Yeah, it's the Article one on here was going from seven citizens to five for the, for the capital improvement. Article two is to amend Article two dash eleven, section two, capital improvement to go from ten years to five years.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Uh, and then three is a placeholder, four is also a placeholder.
Yeah, placeholder is one.
Article three placeholders to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds, uh, money for capital improvement purchases. What they have is printed below, um, which is just a blank.
Okay.
Placeholder, and then Article four is placeholder article for the town to accept the capital improvement matrix.
I think the, some, um, so we, see if town will vote and appropriate transfer available funds for capital equip. So we've got a placeholder for that, that's Article five in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then to see if the town, no, that.
That's the only capital improvement.
That's the only one that we've got.
That's why it caught my eye.
Yeah, we've got that one, but we don't have the ten to five, we don't have the seven to five, there's ten to five years. We don't have the seven to five members.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have the, um, start town meeting early. Um, and then what was the other one you said?
I think that was it.
The last one was.
Accept the matrix?
Just to accept the matrix, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I just wanna make sure that it meets the deadline.
Okay.
That's all, because I think he did.
All right. Um, all right, well, I think we have been around the world and back again. Um, I think this is, I'm feeling good about the depth and breadth of the types of articles that we're getting, um, and the thought that's gone into a lot of them. Um, and it's, it's gonna give us an opportunity to make some improvements in town that are needed. Um, did anybody have any comments on any of that?
I thought it was a great exercise and actually was, I, I hope that continues in the future.
Um, yeah, again, it was a collaborative effort. I'm very grateful for everybody that pitched in. Um, committee updates, did anybody have any, um, burning committee updates that they wanted to provide us?
I just had the one for capital improvement, but I can go at other people because I feel like I've been talking the whole time.
Feel free.
Um, so just for capital improvement, just in general, so yeah, capital improvement in the Plymouth County Hospital reuse, final reuse committee. So with capital improvement, just the one thing I wanted to add is that, um, what was, what was really great to see was a whole heck of a lot of people that were really coming together, but they, they held, um, their department head meeting, which was great. But the standout piece was that there were a lot, a heck of a lot of people that were there for the first time and they were expressing that they were there for the first time. And it's not a knock on any of the great leadership that existed in the past with capital improvement because it's been a great committee for the entirety I've been on. However, uh, it was really, really great to see that, uh, people had no idea how to fill out the stuff. And I even was going through this, and I'm saying this in a very positive way because I think it's, I think it's just really indicative of this. So I'm going through the, the warrant articles here and I'm actually seeing it, I was just pointing out to Ed, that, uh, the highway is actually here. And I thought I saw it last time too. They submitted to the wrong person.
Oh.
Uh, and that's fine.
Yeah.
Because the whole meeting was full of mistakes and people missed, you know, missed, you know, not filling them out right. And the reason why I loved it was because it was the first time I've ever filled it out. Because it was the first time they ever got an invitation to fill it out. And they've been, you know, the chairs of these committees are involved for years. And this is the first time they were like, oh, I really appreciate the opportunity that you guys have given, you know, Frank for giving the invite, uh, to be able to be part of this because A, it's a revenue stream I never knew existed. B, it's a process I never knew. And also, we never get to talk and see everybody.
Exactly, see?
So it was great to see that. So I just wanna give kudos to Frank and his leadership on that, the committee for doing that, because it was really great to see that. Um, and Frank, I owe him a text message back because I, I said, I go, I could have sworn I saw something from highway. I just couldn't remember. And here it is. So I'll send it to you.
I like that sharing of the information. It's so important because, um, you just never know when somebody might have that answer that you're looking for and you, you're gonna have to duplicate efforts to get it. And I also like the idea that, you know, we're a team, the, the town hall employees and department heads are a team and we have to balance the needs, right? So like if fire desperately needs something and maybe police needs it, but it's not as desperate a need. I know they typically anyway, talk amongst themselves, between themselves and, and in addition to with Mr. Shav, but, um, but all of the departments should be kind of doing that. Like, hey, for instance, like, hey, we're thinking about getting new software for X, Y, or Z, like say permitting.
Yeah.
Oh, does anybody else need some software? I know that's not capital improvement, but you know, um.
I just, I just thought it was great. And then there was just really a lot of good di- dialogue back and forth. Uh, it took something that was really like a lot of crunch time and felt like really last minute and rushed and it really made it worthwhile because it was a lot of good dialogue. So that was capital improvement. That was good.
Well, I'm feeling very bullish about the capital improvement committee. And that's another one that I would give gold stars to. There's been a lot of really great accomplishments this year in a very short period of time. And, and I have to say another thing that I've been really thinking about lately as we're filling some of these positions, the notices of the openings is getting smaller and smaller and that's making me feel really good because I feel like we've got more new faces that are engaged, people that are contributing, um, different perspectives, not the same old, same old. Not that there's anything wrong because we need people with history and, and, you know, some background. We can't have everybody being brand new, but, um, I'm feeling very good about this, um, this board and the number of vacancies on committees that we've been able to fill.
I think it's a good sign.
Yeah, it really is.
And then the other one was the final Plymouth County Hospital reuse committee, subcommittee.
Please.
Um, so we're doing a lot of great work on that. Um, the, well, the committee is just absolutely fantastic. We've got lots of plans. We're trying to put a dog park in. We're trying to figure out how to fund an actual park. We have good trails going. We're trying to get irrigation in. We're gonna need, um, uh, Mr. DeFrayis to come in and do a, give us kind of a, all a, a crash course on land use development in the area because we have just a great array of talent. But we definitely need that, that municipal voice, that town hall voice to kind of help us figure it out. So we're gonna hopefully invite him. Uh, he's been great, helped us plan the area. Um, in addition to that though, we're gonna jump on the bandwagon of, of name, name changes. So in the next couple of meetings, when things kind of die down a little bit, uh, the committee right now is putting together a list of things that we would like to reconsider. Um, first, because I can't say the name of the committee that I chair, so, uh, we're gonna make it Joe proof. Um, the second thing is that I don't think the final Plymouth County Hospital reuse committee is indicative of what the work is that's being done anymore. And I think it really needs to change and be inspiring for what the town is actually entrusting them to do, uh, which is, uh, create a, a great atmosphere in, in, uh, for the town and a great area for the town. And we want the, the, the name to reflect that.
I hope you come up with a really good acronym that we can use. Like if you're naming it, come up with something that's gonna be fantastic acronym.
Well, that's why I asked them to do it because I have no imagination and you would just get another committee named parks. So that's what I would do.
Say, come up with a name and back into it with the committee name, you know?
An acronym?
Yeah, yeah, you can look up, you can look, you can look stuff up. You can, there's actually an acronym creator. I, this is, these are the rabbit holes I go down. So there's an acronym creator. If you put in words and it will like suggest different acronyms that you can, um, create. Uh, that's an excellent update. Economic Development Committee, um, to piggyback on the Plymouth County Hospital thing, I'd very much like to get the Plymouth County Hospital, um, to present to the Economic Development Committee about where you guys are at and here's why.
It's called the Final Plymouth County Hospital Reuse Committee.
Well, okay, I'm not calling that. Yeah. That acronym, that acronym is pronounced incorrectly could really go south.
No need for a vowel.
I was gonna say until I saw what it could be.
I don't think we want to even tempt fate with that one. Um, so, um, the Economic Development Committee met, um, last night. Um, we've got a new member, Chris Ernst. Um, you guys may recall, he was on the de-regionalization committee. Great guy, works with small businesses. Um, he's a CPA, very bright. Um, and we've also got a great board. Uh, we've got Ken Sweets, Kevin Cohen, who's on planning, um, and Dan Baffalon, and they've been with us the whole time. Um, the committee has accomplished a heck of a lot. Um, and actually, since we, we actually have a few minutes, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll bring this out while I'm talking to you guys. Um, but, um, one of the things we've been talking about, I think as you guys will recall, Lisa, um, had mentioned to us at our last meeting that she had met with Joan Pierce from the, uh, Mass Wildlife and Fisheries. And Joan had expressed that if we don't use that light control building, uh, for highway, that perhaps, um, Mass Wildlife and Fisheries would look to have an education, um, center there, kind of like the South Shore Natural Science Center. But maybe we'd call it the Southeastern Natural Science Center or something like that. Um, we'd lease it, we'd get paid for the lease. Um, and again, nothing tangible has, but this is just like totally in, in the, you know, kind of just very theoretical stages. But one of the things that the Economic Development Committee has actually applied, um, to get a grant for is to connect, um, Main Street to Burridge through a boardwalk, um, at, at no cost to taxpayers. It's a, it's, it's a straight, through a state grant. Um, if you combine those two things with potentially that, um, education center and then a connectivity, um, you've got the possibility of ecotourism, um, where people are going to be drawn to Burridge, both by the boardwalk and then for the educational center. Um, we also are seeing along Main Street, um, quite a bit of, um, I'd say improvements. Um, and, um, so one building in particular is rapidly improving the outer casing. Um, it remains to receive what's going on inside. Um, but, um, we also know that several of those buildings are about to get developed. So we've got the old liquor store that is about to become four condos. Um, ZBA approved that. We've got Mr. Egan bought the whole scoop and the teleconnectors and there's a project that's been approved, but of course, building costs, uh, building material costs were so high during COVID that a lot of contractors said, I, we have to pump the brakes for a little while until the costs come down because the financials just wouldn't work out. Um, so that was the case there. I have reason to believe that's gonna start getting back on track. Um, and then we've got the condos. We're gonna be taking down that little garage of town meeting, approves it, that's gonna be a little cleanup. Um, and then as I said, that former Ocean Spray building has started to get a little facelift. Um, in addition to that, what we're seeing, um, is we're getting new businesses. So, um, at our last meeting, we heard about the two gals, um, taking over the Cafe Deli. That's awesome because I was really afraid that that was gonna stay vacant. Um, we've got the cooks taking over Hitting Post, which I knew that wouldn't stay vacant. Um, and we've got, um, the chimney chap, um, gentleman who was taking over, um, you know, um, there. Um, and we've got the gentleman who owns Sparrow's is working with ZBA, um, on the building next door that was formerly the Let's Go Brandon building, um, and trying to work, um, on making that into a convenience store. Um, possibly with a little like coffee shop and that type of thing there. And I think the timing honestly for him couldn't be much better. Um, if we think about that Phillips Street project and then we think about some of those other things becoming condos, um, I, we're going to start seeing, seeing some forward movement. All of those buildings are in the area, as you recall, that Tony had, um, had presented to us as that MBTA Communities 40R. And whether you like it or not, the reality is we will not be eligible for certain grants if we do not meet the MBTA communities. The state really hamstrings you. Um, and I do have my own personal thoughts, but I won't share them. Um, and, and then the 40R, as, as, as we are able to increase affordable housing through what those people were doing anyway individually, um, we will be further away from, um, being forced by people who want to do 40B um, into just having them locate wherever they want without any, being able to influence, um, where those locate. Um, again, we, we are very far away. Um, the state requires a 10% affordable housing. We are at like 4.2. Um, so, and, and that needle will continue to move as our population increases, then that, that goes, you know, keeps going. But we're feeling very good about that. The next steps for our committee are, um, to work with our town planner, um, who presented to us and also presented to, presented to this board and then also presented to, um, the Economic Development Committee, um, the town owned properties, um, that, um, that we have in inventory. And the Economic Development Committee wants to take a look at those for, with the purpose of deciding, um, are there properties that the town, um, would want to sell outright or potentially leverage and, and, and do, enter into a long-term lease with somebody who wants to develop them? Now, I have had some feedback from people that just say, just sell all of them. We need the money. That, uh, that is not appropriate planning, uh, for a town, uh, because we always have to be planning for growth. Um, so we don't want to sell a property that at some point we might have use for as a firehouse or a school or whatever, fill in the blank. I don't know what that is, but we have to do planning. And that's why we have our planner to help us. Um, and we're, we actually have, you know, an incredible resource in Mr. DeFrayis. And I think everybody on this board agrees with that. So that's kind of where we're at on that. But the reason that I mentioned the Plymouth County Hospital is one of the things we're looking at grants for is connectivity from Main Street to Plymouth County Hospital. Again, trying to drive people who may want to take the train or even just live down in that area to walk up and use that Plymouth County Hospital, use the Burridge Boardwalk. And you can start to see that there's reasons why you would want to go there. It's very compatible if you take a walk at Burridge to be able to wanna go up to the park and commune with nature in whichever way you want. Um, so we really wanna hear what's going on with the Plymouth County Hospital. We wanna tie that in to Mr. Tarvis. Um, because we think an important draw up at the Plymouth County Hospital is going to be that historic museum. And then potentially up the road, the much debated, um, and it's been out there forever, um, long before I was even on the select board, um, potentially that historic village, which again is a draw. I wanna go up. I wanna check out the artifacts. I wanna commune with nature. I wanna walk my dog, fill in the blank. You get a million different things to do, but you've got someplace where people would be drawn to. Um, so we really want, we had Mr. Tarvis present to me and Mr. Sweets. Unfortunately, we didn't even have a quorum, but he still was a good egg and did it. Um, and would like to have you back, um, to present to the whole board, um, so that they can have the concept. And would similarly like to hear from you guys so that we can make sure that we've got that connectivity and we're communicating amongst each other. And we know where you're at and we can find out, are there grants we can help look at as part of the Economic Development Committee that will help you guys, you know? Um, so I know that was a long-winded explanation, but I haven't given an update on, um, on Economic Development Committee. The two things that we're working on right now are, um, the, the, looking at the town owned properties and then we're working on a marketing plan for the town of Hanson. Um, to reach out with to Metro Chamber South, I always get their name wrong, but I think that's what it is. It's, uh, they're located in Brockton and it's for this area, um, who work with all of the local businesses. And what we want to do is once we get through that list of properties and we identify the properties that we wanna keep and that we might wanna sell or lease, we then wanna look back at that economic plan that the town paid for back in 2019, where that consultant said to us, here's the likely businesses that would want to locate in Hanson based on your demographics and based on the traffic patterns, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and then we wanna market Hanson. We want to actively go out and attract businesses. We've been very passive in the past about it. We want to actively go out and do that. And then the other thing that we're working on, uh, thanks to a grant that Lester and Tony were able to get for us, um, is a little, um, user's guide to, I wanna open a business in Hanson. What do I need to know? Um, so it kind of gets into permitting and what the process would be, signage, all of that type of stuff. So I know that was a long-winded explanation and a lot to unpack, um, but, uh, that's kind of where we're at. So.
That's great.
Yeah. Anything you wanted to?
Sure. Um, you know, we spoke earlier about volunteerism and, um, town employees and how to thank them. Um, I would like to take this opportunity to, um, do a shout out for, um, Leona Gagnon and Jennifer Mitchell, two young ladies, teenagers, uh, that spent the summer volunteering down at the senior center.
That's awesome. Yeah.
They were with Leah's Club and they were doing line dancing. Um, and, um, Jennifer's still at the high school and Leona is gonna be at Mass of Soye. Um, and you just don't see that a lot where you have teenagers looking for some way to volunteer and that's what they did all summer. And, uh, it was really appreciative, um, of the whole group. And we had a little, uh, a little ceremony today with cake, uh, or with ice cream. And I made a little presentation. Um, I got to know these girls, um, and, you know, they're gonna be, um, fine young women. So I just wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, if this is what we're gonna do, this was a perfect opportunity tonight, um, to thank both of them.
And I thank you for reminding me because remember we were doing shout outs every meeting?
Yeah.
Like if there were people that we just really thought had gone above and beyond. And it's not that a million people don't, but sometimes somebody really stands out, you know? Um, so if the board thinks about that, you know, we can just implement that and put it into our ongoing agenda, just a shout out. And if we don't have anything in particular, then we don't have to, you know, do that. Um, okay, well, um, that brings us to one day. Did anybody have anything else? Okay. Um, that brings us to one day licenses. Um, and we have, uh, two that are here. Um, trying to think of any of these. Well, one of them could be a surprise. So, um, as printed in the agenda, I will, um, entertain a motion, um, to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Um, I'll favor. All right, great. Um, did anybody have anything else that they wanted to, um, Mr.?
We don't need to sign anything for any of this.
We are signing, um, thank you, um, after the meeting, we will sign the agreement that I had outlined, uh, for Mr. Donovan so that he can actually begin employment tomorrow morning. Because he is needed. Um, and with that, Lynn, we thank you for sitting through the entire meeting. We're thrilled to have you. We can't wait to see you on the 7th. Um, and thank you so much for, um, for coming tonight. All right, I will entertain, no.
Just really quick, just a big shout out to all the teachers and students starting school tomorrow. So good luck to you all and wish you a lot of success in the new school year.
We wish you a fruitful, fruitful year, fruitful, happy and COVID-free year. Um, okay, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I'll favor. All right, great. Thank you so much.